Welcome, everybody. I'm going to call the DeKalb City Council Regular Meeting of June 27, 2022 to order. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Faber?
Here.
Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Eight present?
Awesome. We have a full house. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Gentry, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, as always, Shadow. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval of the Agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second? Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Smith. Any conversation questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations. First, I have a proclamation I'm going to read that I'm very proud to read. Whereas the LGBTQIA+ Pride Month is celebrated nationwide in the month of June, and whereas this month was chosen to commemorate the riots that took place the morning of June 28, 1969, at the Stonewall Inn in New York, often viewed as the birth of the modern LGBTQIA+ rights movement, and whereas it is important to take time during the month to reflect on the LGBTQIA+ rights movement and important progress that has been made. Whereas the city of DeKalb recognizes that one of its greatest strengths is its diversity of its people. Whereas the city of DeKalb believes in the dignity of the individual, supporting legal equality and treatment of all people, and ensuring the acts of discrimination and hatred will not be tolerated. Whereas members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, plus communities LGBTQIA+ contribute to our community's success and strengths in a great number of immeasurable ways. And whereas the LGBTQIA+ individuals continue to face discrimination simply for who they are, continue to be a target of violence and harassment, and yet to thrive through the efforts of the community itself and through the support of the LGBTQIA+ affirming spaces, agencies, businesses, and individual allies. And whereas discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity is often compounded with discrimination on the basis of race, immigration status, religion, disability, and age, among others. Whereas the city of DeKalb strives to lead in affirming the lives and the values of the LGBTQIA+ individuals through its actions, laws, employees, and commissions. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, plus individuals LGBTQIA+ invite all members of the DeKalb community to join them the month of June in celebrating the resiliency of the community. Now, therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of DeKalb. And I encourage all people in our community to join in celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion and equality and equity. And I further encourage people to join me in eliminating discriminatory practices and policies toward any culture, race, or group. Boy, that was a mouthful. All right. Those are the things I love. And that was a great, those that went out to the Pride Parade, I think we had over 400 people in attendance. It was a great turnout, great conversation, and just a wonderful event to be at. All right, moving on to Presentations Number Two, Presentation of the Final Audit Report for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31, 2021. City Manager, or Carrie, or you'll kick us off?
Yes, I'll kick it off. There is a considerable amount of background in your agenda tonight, and the intent of that every year is to give our public a view of some essentials particularly concerning our general operating fund. But I'm not going to bore you with a line-by-line exegesis of that. Tonight is my pleasure to, and along with Carrie Ditman, our Finance Director, to introduce Brian LaFever, who is a partner with our, the auditing firm that worked on our financials this year, Sickich LLP. Their focus was our FY '21 City Fiscal Year, which ran from January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. And without any further ado, Brian.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. On behalf of Sickich, I'd like to thank the mayor and the members of City Council for inviting us to present some brief comments for you on the report that resulted, resulting from your audit for your year ended December 31, 2021. As Bill mentioned, it's presided in the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It contains three sections, an introductory section, a financial section, and a statistical section. The financial section meets the requirements of Illinois Compiled Statutes for an audit required for the city. What makes it a comprehensive report is the introductory and statistical section. Within the introductory section on Roman numeral three is the award that the city received for its 2020 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And this was from the Government Finance Officers Association, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which represents the highest level of financial reporting within the local government industry. And this is 28 consecutive years that the city's received this award. You should all be commended for that. Within the financial section of the report, the first page there, so that next tab in the report, the first page there is on Sickich Letterhead. This is where we've given our opinion on the financial statements. In order for us to give an opinion on the financial statements, we're required to follow two sets of standards. The auditing standards are issued by the AICPA, the American Institute for Certified Public Accountants. And those standards tell us the types of procedures we need to perform when we're conducting our audit. The second set of standards are the financial reporting standards, and those come from the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. GASB sets the rules for financial reporting for local governments such as the city. Once we follow those two sets of standards, we can issue an opinion on the financial statements. We're pleased to present unmodified opinion, and what that means is that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, free of material misstatement. And this is the highest level of opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. Within that audit opinion, the last page of the opinion, Page Four, references another report where it references government auditing standards. That's a reference to what's called the federal single audit. So there's a separate document that we receive that's called the Single Audit Report, and I can summarize for you what that document tells you. So anytime you expend more than $750,000 in federal funds in a particular fiscal year, you're required to have that separate compliance audit. And within that compliance audit, there's two opinions that are issued. One is on the city's compliance with laws and regulations that could have material impact on the financial statements. And then the other is on your compliance with major programs that were chosen to be tested during the year. And that's based on a formula driven by the federal government. And the two programs that were required to be tested this year was your COVID-19 funds, part of your ARPA funding, and then also your CDBG grant. So for both those opinions, that compliance with laws and regulations, and then compliance with major programs, both unmodified opinions, and no findings noted in that document as well. So that does get filed with the federal government. And then also, there's a separate report related to your TIF districts. We issued a unmodified or clean opinion as well on your compliance with TIF laws and regulations. So all good news there. Just a couple other things to bring to your attention. The Management Discussion Analysis, the next document. If you don't have a chance to review this entire report, I would encourage you to read the Management Discussion Analysis. It's the one, it's city, it's written by the city, required by GASB. And we review it to make sure it's consistent with the financial statements and what's required to be in a management discussion analysis. But the reason I say it's important is because it's the one place in the financial statements that you actually get to give explanations of your own statements. The numbers stand by themselves, but you actually get to compare 2020 with 2021. So I encourage you to read that. As Bill mentioned, there's a good summary in the, in the agenda of, and the memo there of how the general fund performed. To see those numbers as audited, you'd see that on Page 11. But the biggest takeaway there with the revenues over the expenditures there is that the general fund is structurally in balance. You can afford to provide the services that you're providing with the revenue streams coming into that fund. And that's always something you want to pay attention to with your main operating funds. The last thing I wanted to bring to your attention this evening is just an update on pension funding. There's always lots of questions on that, so I want to make sure we cover that. Page 84 is where you come to some information, starting first with Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. So as you're, as you're flipping there, there's three pension funds, right, that the city participates in? You've got your police pension fund, your fire pension fund, and then IMRF. They're all, IMRF is funded a little bit different than police and fire. IMRF, you're given a contribution rate for the fiscal year from the actuaries at IMRF, and you fund that percent of payroll throughout the year. And ultimately, the budgetary impact on Page 84 is up at the top right, $967,000. You're funding exactly what is required. That's a statute provision in Illinois Compiled Statutes that requires you to put in your fair share, no different than any other municipality that, and other governments that participate. For the police and fire pension funds, you have an independent actuary that has a recommended dollar amount, and you fund that dollar amount not based on a percentage of payroll, but rather based on, we're trying to achieve that dollar amount based on the actuary study. You can see both on Page 85 and also on Page 86 that you funded exactly what the actuary recommended. That's one way to look at the health of a pension plan, and then the other way to look at that is to see the financial results. And there's lots of numbers, but I'll point you to the key numbers, Pages 87 and 88. This takes you through December 31, 2021, your IMRF plan. And this will be three lines up from the bottom of the page. On the right-hand page, 88, you can see was 109% funded, up from 98% funded in the year prior. Back in 2015, still a very well-funded plan there at 82%. So very good news. And that's based on the market values of the investments at 123121. Important to point out, because obviously we're in a different market here in '22, however, you don't need to panic about your rate with IMRF because it's a smooth rate over five years. So they take the investment returns, gains and losses, and smooth them out over five years. So if 2022 ends up being not necessarily a great year in the markets, that's just one-fifth of that equation. So you don't, you don't expect your funding rate for IMRF to be going like this, like the market does. Your funding is similar with police and fire in terms of the smooth investment. Page 90, you'll see that your police pension fund went from 54% funded to 58% funded. And that's up from 43% funded just back in 2018. Still above, your police and fire pension funds throughout the state probably average funding right around 50% in terms of percent funded, so above the average. Your fire is a little below average. On Page 92, just up to about 44%. However, you know, in, in three years, that's up from 35%, so certainly making strides there. The last thing to bring your attention, Pages 93 and 94, you can see what the investment returns were for police and fire for the last nine years. Obviously, things are changing a little bit with consolidation. There's a separate Consolidated Fire Fund and a separate Consolidated Police Fund. So those investments will no longer be managed locally, but with the consolidated fund. And the, each of those, you'll still have your local pension board making decisions about pensions and paying, paying the bills as well. In conclusion, the audit went smoothly and on a timely basis. City staff are very professional and easy to work with, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel. Questions, comments? Hearing none. City Manager, I got to commend you definitely on the last few years of just the financial leadership that you've thrown in the city to get us in the position that we are in. And then our Finance Director, Ditman, I don't know if she's here or not.
Yes.
Oh, there you are. Hey, Carrie. You know, new on the job, but obviously you've been dotting a lot of i's and crossing a lot of t's. So I know from being up here, my comfort level and you, my comfort level and Bill, but then to have a third party come and oversee and go through our books and make sure everything is the way it's supposed to be. I feel from a financial standpoint, the city's in a good spot, and I'm definitely very comfortable with the numbers that get presented to us on a regular basis. But again, having you here and Sickich reviewing them just gives you that warm, fuzzy feeling. So really appreciate the audit. I've been through about 130 pages. I'm almost through the whole thing. But it was very detailed, and again, we definitely appreciate the time and energy put into it.
Thank you.
You betcha. All right. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you very much. We enjoy working with the city.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation. We have none. So moving on to Agenda Item F, Appointments. We have none. Moving on to Agenda Item G, Approval of the Minutes. Minutes submitted by the City Clerk. We have none. Minutes submitted by the Recording Secretary. I would take a motion to approve the minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of June 13, 2022, as submitted by the Recording Secretary.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of June 13, 2022 are approved from the Recording Secretary. Then moving on to the Consent Agenda. Quick question. Paul Bork from the DCDC is here to answer any questions. So that is part of our consent agenda. His full report was in the agenda itself, so I'm sure everyone went through there. We can either call it out or ask Paul some questions, or we can just approve the consent agenda as it is before us. So hearing no changes, I would have a motion to approve the consent agenda as is, which is Accounts Payable and Payroll through June 27, 2022 in the amount of $2,426,487.01. Number two, Freedom of Information Act FOIA Report. And number three, DeKalb County Economic Development Corporation 2021 Annual Report. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faber. Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faber?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
All right, the consent agenda passes, and Paul, do not feel bad about that. We were at the annual dinner. We've heard the presentation. We're very happy with our partnership with DCDC and all the hard work you and your staff put in. Your report was very detailed, as always. I consumed it from start to finish. So do appreciate the detail that you give us and for coming out tonight to answer any questions that might have come up.
My pleasure. Thank you for your leadership and support.
You bet. And with that, Paul, you don't have to stick around. If you wanted to skate, you can skate. It's okay. We understand. You betcha. All right, moving on to Agenda Item I, Public Hearings. You got to give me one sec. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't know if I need to gavel or not, but I did, at 6:17 PM. And it's a public hearing for, to consider the revocation of a special use permit approved by Ordinance 2012-070 for a vehicle salvage yard located at 1008 Oak Street. At this time, I would ask if there's anyone in the attendance wishing to speak to this item. You can come up to the podium, sir. Just identify yourself and we're here to listen.
I'm the owner of Dimco Recycling now. This, I don't know how this works, really. This is the first time I've been to one of these hearings, but...
Really, it's about, we're here to potentially revoke.
I understand that.
Yes, so it's your opportunity to advocate for yourself and why we should not do that.
Okay. So we took over this yard approximately a year and a half ago. And since then, we have, we've got three other locations that we're trying to combine together. I know that on the west side of the property, the, this is the auto salvage yard, they called it, when we took over. The other side was just recycling for miscellaneous metals and separation purposes. We weren't aware that this was a special use permit on that side, so we were bringing cars over. First of all, we were dealing with the bank when we took over the property, so we didn't have all of the documents, which, you know, meeting with the city and learning that as we went, the fire department. You know, we did learn that throughout the, you know, the last year and a half. But in the meantime, cars were coming in, and we had purchased a new crusher to process those on that side. So we have two car crushers on the property now. We brought another one over from one of our other properties in Aurora. And during this time, as you know, the mountains were getting higher on the east side of the property. No, I'm sorry, the west side of the property, due to market fluctuations and COVID, basically, because the mills were closing down. We had issues with delivering materials to the mills. You know, contracts were getting canceled, and it's been a nightmare for the last few years. Which is, you know, just, just so you know that, that's why the mountains were getting bigger on the other side of the yard. So since that time, we've done a lot of shipment to clean up the west side of the property. I'm sorry, the east side of the property, where the, you know, the scrap metal is. So we have made a deal, well, not made a deal, but we have been working with the city to keep the balers on that side to process the material and get that material out before the other side. So they can't, they can't be, they can't be on both sides at the same time. So we're working now with the, you know, we've got two balers on one side of the property trying to get all that material out. A lot of that is called unprepared iron, which is too heavy to bail, which is all that's left over there except for one, you know, area that we've got mainly sheet iron. That's a bailable item. So we can use the balers to bail the sheet iron and get that out of there, which will probably be looking at another 30 days for that. And then we can put both balers on the other side, and literally, these balers will, I mean, we could crush. I mean, you know, working with the city and the hours, we can clean that yard out. I think there's 300 cars over there, I'm guessing. But I think we can probably do 40, 30 to 40 cars a day. So once the both balers are on that side, we can certainly make some, make them all gone within, you know, 30 days. So it's not a, it is, it's an eyesore. There's no question about it, and we don't want it there either. It's just the way things have piled up, you know, over the last year and a half, combining all the yards together, and COVID, and the mills, and the markets. So it's been a little bit of everything, but it's certainly not something that, you know, we want to, or, you know, we want to have there. You know, we want, we want it cleaned up too. You know, it's many reasons. You know, that's a lot of money sitting there, for one. You know, it doesn't mean no good if it's sitting in the yard on the ground. So getting it down to, you know, I know the permits, I think, were originally for six to eight or 10 cars a day, I believe, from, from what they're telling me now, but we won't need more than a couple hours a day after we're caught up to continue to, you know, keep the cars over there, because a baler will stay in that position from that point on. So once it's there and it's cleaned up, you know, I'm guessing I could have that yard empty in 90 days. Because now they're, you know, the mills are finally open, they're taking volume, and, you know, we had, I've been in the business for 30 years, and I own Get Green Recycling in Aurora and another small yard in Chicago. I don't know if you know anything about General Iron, but they're one, they were one of the biggest shredders in the Midwest. And they closed down, and so everybody in the scrap business, you know, throughout Chicago and Illinois was basically stuck trying to find a new shredder, and there weren't any shredders that were as big as General Iron. And so when that happened, it just, you know, kind of put a damper on the market because nobody had anywhere to go, you know? And, you know, you try to develop new relationships. At that point, when you've got an influx of inventory, they want to pay you this and say, come on, bring it to me, you know, and you can't do that either. So it was a little bit of a, you know, just, you had to sit on your inventory to make it, and so that's where we were. But I'm, I'm certain I can have that all cleaned up in 90 days and, you know, move forward with the existing permit, if that's...
That was going to be my question. If you gave us a timeline and we choose to extend it, what, 90 days is plenty of time for you to adjust the situation?
I would guarantee I'll have that yard cleaned up in 90 days.
City Manager, do you have any color to add to this at all?
I don't know if anybody else wants to speak to the public hearing part. There is another section on the agenda, which is the ordinance part, which we'll get to pretty quickly. And I, this has been helpful information, and I appreciate you laying that out. And I'm sorry to make a break, but I, this is not probably the moment to do that.
Any questions for him?
I thought I saw one other hand come up, too. So I would, I would be eager to hear from whomever else raised their hand, whether it's two hands?
Well, is there anyone else that wanted to speak on this topic? No. All right. So any questions?
Maybe I did that.
Any questions for him at this point? Yes, Alderwoman Larson.
Well, in reading this, one of the violations was about the fencing. So even if you get it cleaned up, will you then be installing fencing? So in case this issue happens again, it'll be fenced around for the neighbors not to see it?
We're going to improve the property all over. I mean, we're, the plan is to, we've got to get the scrap out before I can do any of that. But we've been in talks with, you know, the city and, you know, we've got sort of a verbal plan. I've got to submit an application for the permits, but we certainly are going to put up new fencing. Now, the fencing on the, I know I'm mixing it up, but the east side is the scrap yard. I think we're discussing the west side, the west property today. I mean, there's problems on both sides, which everybody's aware of. But the fencing is actually falling down in parts on, on the other side of it. But we want to fix it all. I mean, we're going to get the piles gone and put up new fencing, so it certainly is going to look a lot better, and it won't get to this point ever again. I mean, I'm not, I'm certain of that just because it's, it, I mean, I, we kind of came in with a mess. I'm not saying the piles are that high, but we're trying to, we added to it, and now it's, you know, instead of originally cleaning it up like we planned on, just with COVID, everything didn't happen.
Well, I'm sure I'm not the only one, but I hear about both sites, 1008 and...
I don't mean to tell, say that, but yeah, it's both sides right now.
Right, right. We hear about that quite often, yeah.
The fence on the other side, that one side's all concrete, and I think they got, the old owners got a special permit for that to block the noise and the sound and the, and the visual from the, from the residential of the cars and the crushing. Which, you know, they don't want scrap on that side, or the permit doesn't accept scrap on that side, and because of the overflow, you know, we weren't aware that that wasn't a scrap, you know, just the same zoning as the other side. And then, until we started filling it, and I'm like, just put it over there, and then, you know, then they came in and said, hey, what are you doing? So that's when, we did stop, and we were cleaning it out, and there's some, you know, we had the, we've been doing walkthroughs with the fire department and, you know, on a regular basis, showing him reports of the volume of material that's actually leaving the yard and nothing coming into the yard. So we're working to get it cleaned up.
Okay. Yes.
I was just going to say that I'm in support of extending this for 90 days.
Yeah. I think Agenda Item, we got this as an ordinance revision on first reading, so. Okay. I would encourage you to stick around, since you're coming up again later in the agenda, just in case we have any other questions. But hearing no other comments for public hearing, appreciate. You can sit down for now.
Thank you.
Yep. And City Manager, you had nothing more to add? Counsel, we're good. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then, at 6:27 PM. All right.
I'll have something more to add when we get to the ordinance.
I bet you do, yeah. All right, moving on to Agenda Item J, Considerations. We have none. Then Agenda Item K, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2022-049, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the DeKalb Community Unit School District, number 428, as it pertains to school resource officers. Can I have a motion to bring to the floor?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Faber. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first time that the council's had a chance to discuss this draft as a group, as a body. And the council has also seen a draft of the proposed Student Conduct Code. And so with those documents in hand, I'm going to very briefly go through the agreement itself and the economic points and the non-economic points, which are the highlights of it, and then allow the council to have discussion. Samantha McDavid is here, the President of the Board of Education tonight, to help with the information and the background, which I appreciate very much. Thank you for coming tonight. And, and others, Chief Burd is here tonight, too, and can comment on any specific questions you may have. So let's get at it. The document that's before you tonight has been discussed in different iterations. First, concepts and ideas, and something got put on paper, and then that's been reshaped a few occasions, and then the, the council... reshaped a few occasions, and then the, the council for the district and our city attorney have spent some time on this. The, I, I would say at this point, with those people who've had a chance to look at it, it's something of a consensus document. Obviously, you haven't had a chance to join or not join that consensus. And I should also add that the Board of Education has voted to approve this, through last week, I believe. Correct. So, here are the economic points. Some of these are familiar to you, of course, we've had some general discussion. The agreement has a term of three years. What's proposed or anticipated here is that the agreement would comprise five school resource officers for the initial fall term of 2022 into 2023, or the school term, I should say. Those five, and I, I said initial, because there, there is an allowance if the parties, which would be the city and the district, feel that less than five might be in order, then there is a mechanism for reducing that and adjusting the economics of it. So those five SROs would be assigned as follows, there'd be two in the high school, one in each of the middle schools, and one SRO as there is presently for the six elementary schools, that are within the DeKalb corporate limits. The city would be reimbursed by the district for the equivalent of 75% of the total cost of each of the SROs, that includes the base salary and the benefits, overtime pay, if it's directly attributable to the SRO's work in the district. Why 75%? Because when the school, schools are closed for holidays, and also during the summer months, that amounts to about 25% of the, of the year for an SRO. And then also that the district would reimburse the city for a share of the police department's acquisition of two additional police vehicles, that comes to about 25% of the combined vehicle costs, and there's a cost of upfitting to include the police lights and, and other things that go with a squad. The non-economic terms are, are featured at some length. The code of conduct, I, I made passing reference to, is, is critical. The agreement actually requires that a revised code of conduct that is under, still under review, I believe, by the, by the district, should be distributed to all parents and students prior to the start of the, the upcoming school year. The district is also working on a student handbook, which encompasses the, the code, the, the code of conduct, and also disciplinary policies and rules, and that that will also be shared with each student's parents and guardians within 15 days of the beginning of the school year. There was some discussion, a fair amount of discussion, actually, back and forth over the last couple of months, about citations for ordinance violations. It's within the authority of SROs, both to deal with criminal actions, and also ordinance violations, the, all right, I'll say it, the smoking in the washroom stuff, which is, does not rise to a criminal act, in most cases. And there are, there is some considerable language dealing with that. It was never, it's not the intent of our SROs to go seeking students in classrooms, in poorly monitored classrooms, to give them a, a ticket, or to give them a ticket on the spot. That's a collaborative thing that is discussed first with the staff at the district, and depending on the school, and, and there's usually an understanding, a shared understanding that there will be some citation issued, and obviously the parents or guardians get involved in that as well. So, that language, I think you've had a chance to look at. And finally, indemnity, the, the old language of the SRO agreement that had been going on for a long time, not only identified us for actions, or for damages, that arose out of actions that were done in the performance, the, the strict performance of the duty of the SROs, but also those that weren't necessarily in the strict performance of the duties. And we thought it was fair to adjust that to, to the modern standard, which is basically that we'll, we'll be responsible for what we do, just as they will be responsible for what they do, and, and if we do everything with the best intentions and within the law, that will be identified, and if we don't do that, and knowingly and callously do something that we, this district has no duty to indemnify us. So those are the general terms, there's a lot more to this document. I yield to, to you, and happy to answer any questions, just as Chief Burd will.
Counsel, questions? Alderman.
Just comments, bottom of page three. I fully agree that SROs should not pursue truancy and residency investigations, but it calls them, or titles them noncriminal, when it actually, according to the Illinois state statute, they are, or can be criminal, residency, fraud, and/or truancy. So I would like to see that rewritten to absolutely support SROs not pursue those challenges, but that they are, in fact, they can be criminal.
I'm going to yield to the, the city attorney, who's had some back and forth with this today.
Okay. City attorney.
Yeah, I think that there are derivative violations that could be criminal, in which case we reserve our sole province to prosecute those criminal violations, but, for example, if you say fraud, that could be a derivative violation, that, that could be prosecuted. But the actual school code statutory provisions for truancy, and for residency requirements are, are noncriminal in nature, they're under the school code, and they cannot be, by the school code, cannot actually be investigated or prosecuted by the city. So, so that was the reasoning behind that language.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Alderwoman Larson.
Just a statement, I, I feel with this back and forth with the school board, and with the city, that we are both at the spot, that we realize something needs to be done, we need to make it a collaborative effort to get it our schools where they're safe, and, and a place our students should be. That being said, this code of conduct, I'm, I don't want it to be on the SRO's plate, and I'm hoping that the, you know, the city's doing the SRO portion, and then I'm hoping the administrative people from the schools will take in this new code of conduct, and that will be the collaboration that we need to get students where they need to be, and if they're not students, they shouldn't be in the schools, just hanging out, and that kind of some of the problems we had before. So I'm really excited about this, but I do have one question for Chief Burd. You said before that it could be, you don't just get any officer and say, hey, go to the school today, and there's special training, and that it takes time. What's our timeline?
Well, we're moving forward in a, as swiftly as possible. We actually have interviews set for this Friday, for the SROs. We have three candidates that'll be interviewed on Friday. So by the end of the day, Friday, we will have, I would imagine we have two selected out of, out of the candidates that we, that did submit interest, and they're three good, extremely solid candidates with a lot of police experience, so I, I think we're on the right track with that is concerned. And then we also have a class that'll be coming up in July for them, those two, to attend. So as far as timeline, we're, we're moving very swiftly, and we're in line to at least get them through their selected and, and training before August first.
And Chief, we involve the district staff in the selections.
Yes. So I believe right now, the, the head of HR is going to be there as part of the review panel for the school board, and any other panelists they would like, and of course, we will be there with, with departmental panel members, so.
Great.
I mentioned one other thing, you were talking about the importance of the, the code of conduct. One novel thing of, of this agreement draft, as opposed to earlier ones dealing with our SRO involvement, is that we're going to, our, our objective is to tie where, where there are discipline offenses, whatever they are, where the student is going to be coming to school. The, the district and the city are collaborating on a community service program as a consequence of, of whatever happened, and that is not a finely honed process as yet, but I, I think that's some work that has to be done between now and when the school year starts, so that we have some different tiers and levels, and then there are consequences, and then there's something worked out about how that supervises, how we know that it actually occurred, and, and so, so forth, so that it's going to be an expectation on the part of the student that if I, oh, if I do this, I'm probably going to do that.
Alderwoman Morse.
Okay, so one question I have, for Samantha, is how will this code of conduct be distributed?
And Samantha, if you can come up to the microphone, so I can hear. And thanks for coming out tonight, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. It is our intention that the code of conduct, along with the newly revised parent-student handbook, which is pretty explicit about what parent expectations, whoops, and student expectations are, and that is, just to acknowledge Alderwoman Larson's comment, that is absolutely our intent as well, is that this is to really have a level playing field across the district, to make sure that every party that's involved in, within the district knows what their expectations are, whether that's staff, students, administration, parents. And then also to know what the possible consequences, as well as the restorative practices that could be in place to help repair any harm that's been done by, you know, code of conduct violations, or, as well as what those consequences are to hold, to keep that harm from happening in the future. So we plan on, we have a couple more steps to finalize our code of conduct, including getting some more family engagement feedback in that, because we want families to really own it, as, you know, members of the district community. And so with that, we plan to have multiple ways to get that out. One is going forward, once it's finalized and approved, it will be included as a, you have to acknowledge that you are, have read and understand the student and parent handbook, and the code of conduct when you're registering your student. But we'll also have, because most people have already registered before the next school year, we will have email, we will have some social media, we'll have whatever campaigns we can, we're looking into the newspaper, radio spots, making sure that people understand this is new, and it's out there, and this is the new expectation.
So, you know.
If you have suggestions, we're willing to hear those.
Yeah, I, I think I'm thinking about, you know, I'm, I'm a mother of four, you know, and I don't read a page of it, you know, and I can guarantee 99.9% of parents don't read it. And with the structure being click a box, say I've read it, you're still not going to breeze through it, or touch any of it, or see any of it. I'm not suggesting printing it, because that's kind of ridiculous.
You can read it then anyway, either.
There, there is one other option as well. Before COVID, we had a orientation that every parent had to come to, to sign with their student, as well, to sign our, our policy for digital, being a good digital citizen, and it includes a video. So we have also talked about making a short video to be watched at a welcome back orientation night, where they also sign the handbook, the digital citizenship, and it could be the code of conduct included in that, where there is a direct presentation of it. I'm sorry, but go ahead if you have more suggestions.
That's, that's a great idea. One suggestion I have, which is probably very challenging, but might be to figure out how to boil this down to a one or two-page summary of the key highlights, maybe a chart, something like our bus route system pamphlet, that if you've seen is really, you know, visually comprehensive, you can go through it, you can understand quickly what you're trying to get at, and you've got, you know, like, one of those QR code to get you to the link to it directly. So I'm thinking that if you can produce this, you know, one-page document, people will get it, and will understand what the consequences are, because I would love to know just real quick, like, okay, if my kid does this, this, or this, they're getting this, and this, you know, just laid out clearly.
Sure, I think that's a, a great suggestion, and we're planning on doing that with the updates to the parent-student handbook, so it could easily be a companion, two-page with QR code.
I had one other question. I know I, I read in the background about that the city council would be connecting with this board, reviewing what was, so I'm trying to remember what, what I read, and I didn't quickly find it right now, that there is, we're going to review with someone students' behavior or something? What did I?
There, there's a, called reciprocal reporting responsibility, but it won't be the city council per se. The, I think the issue here is, how do we know how we're doing in the course of the year, and are we going to do this on a regular basis? And if we did it on a monthly basis, who would it be? And as it reads in the document, if you go to page three, no, a little bit further on, eight, we got it there. And this is just a general statement, but I can maybe elaborate a little bit. It says, "The district's parent-teacher advisory committee," which, as I understand, that's, that's a key, I mean, involving, parents with teachers is one of the key parts of the mission, I guess, as the district defines it now. So that's, that's the district side. "In cooperation with local law enforcement agents," well, that would be police department, and, or, and/or probably administration. "Shall develop with the district's school board," and it should probably also say city, "policy guidelines and procedures to establish and maintain a reciprocal reporting system, which, so it doesn't exist yet." But we, the idea is to do it regularly, and thorough, with depth. Does that make sense?
Good.
Just to add to that, if I may, it, it, it does exist in some fashion right now, because it is, so we have to have that committee by.
I was just thinking with us, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so right now, SROs are involved in any investigation that includes a crime, such as having an illegal substance, but I think there's plenty of room to expand how that looks, and make sure that it's working well. And I think the board has approved a security manager that would be a good point person, and as soon as that person is, that position is filled, we can communicate that with the city and the chief, to make sure that they're in close contact.
And I know in my conversations today, I heard from multiple alderpeople that, you know, just in the spirit of transparency, we would like to figure out what is some sort of mechanism that council will have some awareness to, and insight into, the effectiveness of the student code of conduct in the SROs.
And maybe that's a consent agenda report.
Yeah, exactly right.
On a monthly basis.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, Mayor.
Alderman.
I think more importantly is what are some of the goals we can set together from a standpoint of being able to reduce student resource officers? So if we're at 828 incidents now, that's what, why I was asking previously for the repeat offender data, so if we had 20 children committing 20 offenses per year, that's already 400. So I guess, without necessarily knowing that detail, what is some of that, I guess, data that we can agree on to say, okay, if we move in year one from 828 to 400, and reduce the need for a student resource officer, everything that's going into place is working? How flexible is that? I would like to see that number reduced as soon as possible.
I think we can collaborate from the beginning of the school year on a monthly basis, and get you data. We, we collect data, you collect data, with the, what's the new position?
The security manager.
Security manager, and, and a point person for our SROs, can get the raw material, and then, and then it can be sifted and sorted by other parts of the administration on both, for both parties, and I think we can give it to you. And you'll, you'll see something at first, and say, wow, this is what we were looking for, we need, we need more, and then we'll work on that. I, I think this is going to have to evolve, I don't, I don't think we've got the perfect system yet.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Alderman Smith. No worries, man.
Another conversation. I have the code of conduct. You're asking us to approve this as draft, but you still can make drastic changes to it, correct?
Um, we.
We don't approve that.
We don't approve this, correct?
School does, correct.
Thank you, but it's included in our agreement, right?
That they have to have one.
It's a precondition.
Yes.
It's a reference.
Because the only way I'm approving it is if this stands in 99%. And that's, I mean, you got, if you guys make significant changes to this, I personally will ask someone to bring this back.
Okay, I know that our council is looking at it and getting us, getting back to us right now.
And Matt, I noticed our general provisions for termination, do we have an out clause?
Yeah, both sides have, 90-day notice prior to the beginning of the fall term.
I'm for this, and Chief Byrd knows I am, because I am not going to have an officer, I've seen all the videos, I am not going to have an officer hurt, not being one for 36 years, no way will I, not in this town. So I'm going to approve, I'm for this, but I am going to hold school board accountable.
Understood.
And I don't know about everybody else, that's me personally, but, because you know, you're asking us to pull seasoned officers off the street when we're already shored, and I'm hearing, well, why are we putting more resource officers in the school when you can't, the guys are working hours and hours of overtime just to make things work?
I think it was our understanding that the city first approached us about potentially needing to add SROs, and I agree that what's occurring right now isn't safe, and we don't want anybody to be hurt either, but we want to work on this in partnership with the city.
Okay. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, one, I've been in multiple meetings with the school district and at multiple school board meetings. I appreciate the collaborative effort that we've had. Some of the meetings that I've attended with Chief Byrd and City Manager Nicholas included Board President McDavid, other board members, as well as times five to 10 different members of the faculty, all discussing this. And, you know, I feel it's a change, it's different there at this point, that there's a real commitment on the school district's effort to realize where we, as a community, are in crisis mode, and they are committed, from a school perspective, to really work on addressing and reducing the amount of incidences that we have, creating a safe environment for all of our students. And then our partnership, which we can't forget about, is Hunter Hillcrest, Trifat, Ridgebrook, Lincoln Tower, addressing the crime and the situations in there that cause those kiddos that leave our schools and go back home to be in an environment that is not conducive to, when they go back to school, to be in a state of mind that allows them to behave in a way that we would expect. So this really is, I think Alderwoman Larson mentioned it, a collaborative effort between the school district and the city of DeKalb. We will do our part, we'll expect you guys to do your part, we'll be transparent on both sides, hold each other accountable on both sides, but I'm really looking forward to seeing the impact of the security plan, security manager, new SROs, and I would say also your leadership, which Board President McDavid is new to the role, and it's been refreshing, just the limited experience that I've had working with you. I really feel good about where we're at as a district and also where we're at as a community.
And if I could add to that, we have, the board has approved significant investment in social workers, counselors, revamping our social emotional learning plan, looking at our multi-tiered system of support framework to make sure that we're really addressing student needs at the root cause as well. So we really want to make sure that this is a well-rounded, full approach to addressing student needs.
Yes.
So I guess just two points of clarification. Chief, you're on board with this, right, with the, what you've seen in the code of conduct?
Yes, 100%, yes.
And then secondly, the expectation is that this code of conduct is going to be in place for the school year coming up in August then?
Yes.
So there is a backend, and there's a agreement and support with the police here?
Yes.
So.
Okay. Hearing no other comments? Appreciate you coming out, Board President McDavid.
Thank you.
We need a roll call on this, right, with the resolution? Okay, roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Resolution 2022-049 passes. All right, moving on to resolution, item number two, resolution 2022-054, receiving and filing the FY 2021 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, ACFR, Single Audit Report, Report on Compliance with Public Act 85-1142, TIF Report, Downstate Operating Assistance Certification, and Independent Auditors' Report and Management Letter. Can I get a motion and bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faver, City Manager.
If you're content with the city's presentation and your background, Mr. LeFever's presentation to you tonight, then we ask that you approve this resolution, which receives and files those documents that were referenced earlier, and some of which will be shared with the state comptroller, and there's other filings that have to occur, and we're out of time, so I hope you can do this tonight.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Resolution 2022-054 passes, and sir, you are welcome to leave. Thank you for coming out tonight, we appreciate it. All right, moving on to agenda item three, resolution 2022-055, awarding a three-year retainer agreement between the city of DeKalb and Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for professional airport consulting services at the DeKalb-Taylor Municipal Airport. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Faver. Okay, City Manager.
You're aware that we have had a retainer agreement with, we'd say CMT, but Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly for a number of years now. We've had a retainer agreement with a consulting engineering firm regarding airport improvements, upgrades, and land acquisition and so forth since the early 90s. CMT has performed a very good service for us, as you know, more recently, they were involved, working with our partners at the state and the federal level, which is a key role for them in getting the federal funding to us for the runway, or the, in this case, it was the taxiway improvements that were done over the last year, year and a half, just a few little things just being completed this week. Also, they work with us in maybe one-off things, whenever a new company is coming to the area and they happen to be somewhere near our flight path, it's very important that somebody make a representation to the State Department of Aeronautics, Division of Aeronautics, and the FAA to assure them that everything will work out. It's not sufficient that Bill calls and says, trust me, guys, it'll work. So they always do a very professional job, they expedite things, because usually when we get those requests, they have to be expedited. There are a lot of other ways that they've helped us. The reason they're on the agenda tonight is because we went out, as required by the state and federal law, to request qualifications from interested firms, we need to do this periodically. Their current contract expires in a couple of weeks, they're the only respondent, and we know their work, we feel they're fair, their price sheet, which is attached to the agenda, is very competitive, it's, they break it down by the level of experience and education and work on similar types of projects. So we feel they're, they've been a good partner, we'd like to stay with them for another three years, that's what's before you tonight.
Council. Hearing no comments or questions, roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Resolution 2022-055 passes. Moving on to number four, resolution 2022-056, authorizing an agreement with the DeKalb Corn Fest Incorporated for the 2022 Corn Fest. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, I'm going to say seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager.
These two could be taken in omnibus fashion, but the parliamentary steps it would take to do that, it's easier to just hit them one at a time. So this one allows the DeKalb Corn Fest, Inc. to conduct their annual event in our central business district on Lincoln Highway.
Any comments or questions, except we're looking forward to Corn Fest? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Faver?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Resolution 2022-056 passes. Moving on to number five, resolution 2022-057, approving the regulation of traffic for the purpose of holding the annual DeKalb Corn Fest on Illinois Route 38, Lincoln Highway, between First Street and Fourth Street, beginning Thursday, August 25, 2022, at 4:00 p.m. through Sunday, August 20, 2022, at 10:00 p.m. Can I have a motion?
Sir, moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
We just allowed, by the previous action, the Corn Fest to use the street, but it's not our street, so we have to ask permission respectfully of the Department of Transportation to allow us to close that street so the Corn Fest can use it from the 25th of August through about 10:00 p.m. on August 28.
Which is going to be amazing to see, I mean, moving all the vendors to the center of Corn Fest was just transformational, but now with the sidewalks out and watching everyone just walk downtown and hang out for that festival, I'm really, really looking forward to it. Comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Faver?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight eye.
Resolution 2022-057 passes. All right, moving on to agenda item L, ordinances, second reading, we have none, then agenda item M, ordinances, first reading, number one, ordinance 2022-028, revoking ordinance 2012-070, providing a special use permit for a vehicle salvage yard located at 1008 Oak Street. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Faver, City Manager.
Thank you, and I'm just going to have a few limited remarks, Mr. Myers is, did I get that right?
Yeah.
Giving you some background, I'm filling in a few pieces, and I think he was very straightforward, the property that is known as DeKalb Iron and Metal, or Dimco, has long been involved in metal salvage and recycling for several generations. I think the founder was the Prober family, and members of their family continued it on, Jeff Gorman, some of you know him, Mark Heine, and so forth, and then, I think it was four or five years ago, they sold it, and there was another owner, just one owner before you picked it up, yeah.
Yeah, the private, from the Probers.
Yeah, and obviously, the world has changed. When Probers were starting it, we had industrial roots here, they were still pretty deep and pretty strong, and a lot of those have vanished, and in the region, a lot of the industrial works have, that have produced the kind of salvage that you're seeing there have gone by the right history. So, and it is true that maybe the largest yard in the Chicagoland area was closed down about a year and a half ago because of, I think the city of Chicago was involved there, environmental concerns, or maybe there was an expansion underway, I believe, at the time, maybe there's some issues with that, and is it still closed down? Or they're taking some, I don't know. But that obviously closed the door to a lot of the feeder yards like Dimco, created more inventory. On the other hand, the previous owner, and working with Mr. Myers, even acknowledging the ebb and flow, the problems with the industry itself, with the markets, and when the markets are flowing and when they're not, there have been issues there, we've had tall piles, as Mr. Myers admitted, and the piles have their own problems that go with them, the neighbors don't like them very much, the fire department doesn't like it very much, they have these things, they call these metal fires, that erupt every once in a while, not a lot of them, but a few of them, that come just from, you know, stacks being there and not moving for a long time, and you get some pressure.
We eliminate all of the incidents.
And that's a good thing. Yeah, and that's a good thing, that's in the last year. So, but it's for you tonight, before you tonight, because the building department, who's, and Don Harper, who's here in the back of the room tonight, who's been our point with the ownership and management, had reached a point where they weren't confident that we'd be able to achieve the goals that were presented to us tonight without having to raise the ante, so that's what this is about. There was a formal notice given after about a year or so of back and forth and trying to work this out. So we're here tonight, you know, we're at the edge of precipitous public action. What was before you tonight, in your background, was the revocation of the special use permit, which would have allowed, as it is now, allows recycling on the east side of 10th Street, which is where the cars are. The recycling yard and the salvage yard on the west side of 10th Street is legal nonconforming and continues under that permit. So what's at stake here is what's on the east side, which is the car recycling area. And there are three general things that we're looking for, and Mr. Myers had proposed 90 days, and so that's on the table. One of the things is that the work all be kept within that area that's defined in the original special use permit. Another is that the fencing would adequately cover whatever you would see from the, as a passerby or a driver by, that obviously, the more cars stacked, the higher the fence, but the fence limit is 15 feet, so a stack of about 15 feet. And the, the third item, sorry, was, oh yeah, the restriction in the hours of operation, and I'm not sure in the arguments for the revocation, where that came in, but obviously, that's important to the neighbors as much as other things. So those are the three key concerns that the city has presented. I'd like to hear what the council wishes us to do. The item before you called for revocation, there are steps before that or steps beyond that, we can, I'll just suggest a few. One is what was suggested by Mr. Myers, which is that the council defer action for 90 days, I believe that was the gist of it, until you had a chance to demonstrate that you were able to achieve what you said you would do, and that can be documented, obviously, very easily with pictures and so forth, and testimony in 90 days, or whenever the nearest council member is, council meeting is to that. You can choose to say 30 days or 60 days, or you can say, we've had enough, we're going to proceed. So any or all of those things, I think, are before you tonight in your discussion.
And just a point of order, like, we would need to, how would that work? If we wanted to extend for 90 days, we would vote this down?
You could vote it up on one reading, and then you can defer action until you see what kind of performance there is.
Okay, so we defer action for 90 days, let's say, on the second reading?
Or you can postpone.
Yeah, there's several actions, you could deny it.
Yeah, there could be a motion to amend the draft ordinance that you have there that would say that the city would stay its enforcement of the revocation for 90 days, pending, you know, Mr. Myers' compliance as represented today. So it would be, you know, there would be an ordinance that would revoke it, but then it wouldn't be effective, or there wouldn't be a prosec, you know, it wouldn't be enforced if the chief building official certified in 90 days that there was no violation.
To be expeditious, when we just approve this on first reading?
You could approve it on first.
And 90 days later, we bring it back.
Bring it back.
We approve it on second reading.
You could do that too. That's another.
That gives Mr. Myers time, right? All right, so that's a suggestion, that, I mean, he's asking for 90 days, I mean, it's not your fault you inherited the sins, but you inherited the sins, so you need to address that for sure, but if you're telling us 90 days works, I'm fine going that path. Yeah, can you come up to the microphone, actually? It's all recorded, so we'd like to have your voice.
I just want to make sure that we can operate, or what the hours of operations would be up until that. up until that ninety days is up, like you say, you know, two hours a day is not gonna come realistically.
Well.
They're, they're in the ordinance that currently exists, I don't have the copies, and just for the record, there's no complaint about the current operation, hours of operation?
That's on the west side.
It's on the west.
Yes.
Complaints on the east.
Yeah.
And I think reasonable hour, what are your hours of operation now?
Well, we are, we're open seven thirty to four, but, you know, to clean that up, I would like, you know, I mean, if I could get seven hours somewhere in the middle a day, just to make sure that I can get this done.
It would require changing the special use ordinance that exists, an amendment which would have to.
Can somebody pull up the hours now?
Yeah.
It's on our.
Got it.
Don to the rescue.
I think it limits amount, an amount of cars.
You have seven thirty to four, you can also work on Saturday, eight to eleven thirty.
But how many cars does it say you can process, because we're gonna have six a day?
Obviously, you're gonna have to do more than that.
Right, just until we get caught, get it gone.
And they, I, you know, it's, that's up to count, but I would say, you operate full tilt of seven thirty to four.
Okay.
You know.
Get it cleaned up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what I can say is that we can't amend that special use, but we don't have to enforce it necessarily.
Alderman Smith?
If your direction to us is to allow them to operate aggressively in that seven thirty to four, then that's how we'll operate.
Is that good? Yeah, go ahead, Alderman Smith.
I, that's where I was kind of summarizing up, we'll be talking about this all, I'd like to think, I think council would probably, I'm not gonna speak for them, but would give you a chance, but what I'm a little upset with is the building, when you get contacted by our building and code department, I understand there's been no response, there, is that tr-
I, I don't agree with that, but.
Okay.
Unless I'm missing something, I mean, I've got an attorney on this whole thing since the beginning of this started.
Okay, I'll just leave it at that and let it, is that my understanding that we've lost, there was lost communication, or?
Go ahead, Don, you wanna come up?
I mean, I think what we're willing to do is, you know, you want us, you're asking us to stop this, to give you a chance, we just wanna make sure that there's established communication with the city to come to a resolution.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I agree with that.
I would say there was no compliance, Tracy, that would be my comment, would, not necessarily no communication, but not the compliance that was stated would happen and didn't.
I mean, I think we all, I would like to see it back to let you operate like the original special use permit, get in compliance, I mean, we're not here to, at least I'm not, to say, time to pack up and leave town.
Great.
Please take your mess with you, no, no offense, but I know how, how it is, I've taken steel over there, and, you know, it's important to the city, and I just think what we're really asking, or I would like to see done, is just literally bring the site in compliance with the special use permit, and then we'll all work together and move forward.
Great.
Yeah, Mr. Myers, we, we try and operate as business friendly as possible, I mean, we work, we actually work really hard at that, and I think that's part of the success, we've had so much economic development lately.
No, I feel that, I do feel that.
But then, but, real, real quick, real quick, the reverse is true, non-compliance, refusal of, no communication, then we go the other direction, so, we're trusting that you're gonna be an honorable man, say what you're gonna do, and I'm willing to take that at this point, in order to get us to the ninety day point as quickly as possible. Alderwoman Morris?
I get the sense that he is trying to express that the hours of seven thirty to four o'clock are not sufficient hours to complete this in ninety days, is it?
They are.
Yeah.
No, I think in the ordinance, there's a limit of when you can crush cars.
Okay.
Like twelve to fours, something like that, that's what he's saying, it's not enough time.
Okay, good.
But I, I'm hearing the council say, stand down on the enforcement until, and if the Alderman is, is all right with that.
Can I, can I ask one thing?
Yeah.
This is kinda, obviously, there's two yards, I could clean up that west yard, if you said concentrate on that only, right now, and just take that out of the equation quick, but I'm gonna do that in ninety days, no, without a question about, and I can certainly clean that up.
Then we're good.
But the, the east yard is going to take a little, that's gonna sit still for a minute.
So, it seems that the, since the focus tonight, Mr. Myers, is the east yard.
Okay.
And that's where you need to, you've got three hundred cars, thirty, forty a day, there'll be bad days and good days, and so you need all that ninety days, or very, a large part of it, to focus on that, it's not that we don't want you to attend to the west yard.
I get it.
But it seems to me that's, that's your focus, that's where the sword is right now, so I think you should do that.
Okay, very good, I agree.
Okay, yeah, Alderman Favor?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, do you understand, now do you understand the ordinance?
Yes.
And if not, let's make sure we, okay, and, and as was stated, obviously, we wanna be business friendly, I, was there within two, the last two years, didn't we have an AIP for fence? Okay, so, the other question is, I know it's, right, the last two years have been just crazy, what are you gonna do in the future, I guess, if you don't have someone to sell crushed cars to, are you gonna stop the influx of cars, or what, what will be your plan of action going forward to?
If that happened.
Prevent this from happening again.
Yeah, if that happened, we would certainly stop taking them, I mean, it just wouldn't, we wouldn't allow this to happen again.
I know that impacts your business, because then people are like, well, he doesn't want, he doesn't want cars, so we won't, we won't go to him next time in the future.
Right, and we wanna take them, because it's a good service for the city also, and, you know, it, it, you know, ultimately, we just gotta make sure that we've got an end game in play, and now they, we've got some, you know, at the end of the day, developing new relationships, when General Iron went out of business.
Right.
People that have been knocking on your door for twenty years, saying, hey, sell me, sell me, and you're saying, no, and then finally, you gotta go knocking on their door, nobody's buying, you know, so we're beyond that now, we've got new relationships, you know, in different, even in different, you know, states that we're shipping to, and the bailers help, because you can, you can now ship twenty tons on a load, rather than lose cars, which you had to do locally, because you were just crushing them and not bailing them, so now we have bailers, we can fill loads that justify the distance to go wherever I've gotta go.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in support of, you know, the ninety days, however you wanna vote on it.
So City Manager, just, Alderman Perkins?
Yeah, so I just, I just wanna clarify that, so, make sure we're all on the same page with what we agree on here, so we're saying, in ninety days, both lots will be cleaned up.
No.
No? Because I heard some reservation on that.
Ten oh eight would be cleaned up.
So, okay, so the east lot will be cleaned up, what about fencing around, because I heard some discussion on repairing fencing, putting fencing up, is that in the scope of this then as well?
Fencing on the west yard is all fine, it's just the piles are higher than the, the existing fence.
Okay.
No, that's not true, Danny.
It's not?
On the west side where your piles of scrap are?
No. Oh yeah, the west side.
Yeah, the west.
The concrete fence.
No, that's the east.
Oh, that is the east side, no, we're talking about the east side, that's all we're talking about tonight.
Yes.
The east side fence is fine.
Your front is not probably high enough, especially for the piles you have now.
Right.
You know, your, your side proof fence, not the concrete one, but the side proof fence.
But it's standing up, I mean, if we, if we got those cars gone, it's, it's legal, or it's not, let's see, we're not, we're not.
But I think that Alderman Perkins is referring to the west yard.
Yeah, he is.
Where the fence has been crushed.
We've gotta get those piles down, to get them off the fence, to replace the fence, and then we've gotta get approval to put up a new fence, because it's gonna be as big as a let me do, or let me go, and it'll be a little more, you know, it's gonna be a sturdy fence, it's gonna be iron, you know, not just a, not just a chain link fence.
But before us tonight is just ten oh eight.
Is just ten oh eight?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we're saying in ninety days?
Both sides are gonna look just as good.
That'll be cleaned up.
Yeah, in, in, in time, but we gotta get that one side done first.
Yeah, ten oh eight in ninety days. Alderwoman Morris?
Just to piggyback off what Alderman Favor was saying, and what I think we've expressed, that we really wanna be business friendly, so if you find that, I just wanna make sure that you remain in communication with us, so that if you find that this special use permit is not meeting your needs, we need to discuss that, and figure out how it can meet your needs in the future, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, what I'm hearing is, we're gonna pass this on first reading, we're gonna ask you not to come back for second reading for ninety days, that gives them the time allotted, and we're saying it's okay, in our opinion, for him to crush cars, as many as he wants, from seven thirty A.M. to four P.M., in order to meet the ninety day deadline. Is that what I heard?
Yeah.
And what you needed?
Does somebody have a calendar, we can say exactly what meeting we will come back?
Yeah, there's one right before ninety days, in September, the, the second meeting in September.
Do you wanna do it after?
The twenty-sixth.
We could target that, and then if it looks like you needed three more days, then we could bump into the next meeting or something.
So the meetings are just three days difference?
Yeah.
No.
No.
Say, say.
We have two meetings a month, and it just happens, the sequence of meetings.
Eighty-seven days.
Will fall about three days before the ninety day.
Yes, are you okay with eighty-seven days?
I'm okay right now with eighty-seven days.
That's awesome, right.
I'll take that, for sure.
If it's just you in a broom, and we're that close, I, yeah.
Yeah, if I, if I, if I need three more days, I got bigger problems, I think.
So it'll be the, it'll be the last meeting in September, or the closest one to ninety days?
Yes. Okay, any, can we move on? All right, awesome, not that I'm trying to rush us, but yes.
You have to vote.
Mr. Myers, I thank you for coming out tonight, but let's get this vote done real quick, roll call please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero two eight passes on first reading, Mr. Myers, thanks for coming out tonight, and you're more than welcome to leave, we appreciate all your feedback.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item Two, ordinance two zero two two dash zero two nine, approving a special use permit for a vehicle tow facility and storage yard at four oh seven Industrial Drive, JNS Towing and Recovery, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Favor, City Manager.
Thank you, as I say in the background, JNS Towing and Recovery is requesting approval of a special use permit, special use permit again, for a vehicle tow facility and storage yard at four oh seven Industrial Drive, that site, if approved by the council, would function as an auxiliary impound yard, they're overflowing from the current yard, and have talked with Mr. Tad about the possible use of the back of his property at one ten Industrial Drive, or, or that's where they are now, one ten Industrial Drive, excuse me, so they're looking to relocate a portion of that to four oh seven Industrial Drive, it's about a one, little, under one and a half acre site, I think, and so it's a back portion of that, specifically, it's a hundred by a hundred and fifty foot storage area that they're looking to use, because this is behind the, the main building on the site, and the public's not invited back in there, the area doesn't have to be paved, it'd be, you know, kept up with probably gravel and aggregate surface, which would be adequate, the, there is an agreement that in the front of the, the building, that there'd be some striping done, that it's either not been done, or have to be just upgraded a little bit, and this has been before the Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the other items was, in our UDO, requires the erection of a ten foot fence, well, there's a fence around the adjacent yard now, so just to follow literally the, the UDO, we'd be building a fence next to a fence, which didn't make a lot of sense, so, there was a variance requested to allow that one side to be fenced, basically, by the existing fence, the Planning and Zoning Commission, which has the authority to give variances, not, not the council in this case, on fences, agreed that that was reasonable, so what's before you now is the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, which was unanimous, to allow this, for this special use permit that's been requested, so that that hundred by a hundred and fifty foot storage area could be used at four oh seven Industrial Drive for JNS Towing, and we have recommended that you support the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation.
Council. If I remember right, this fence is, when you look over that fence, it's into Zimmerman's Scrapyard?
Yeah.
Right. Alderwoman Larson?
Okay, I'm, I'm, maybe in another life I read this, I thought I read somewhere that another towing company wasn't, that, that they weren't gonna be meeting all of the requirements, because they wouldn't have all of their towed vehicles at one location, do we have to worry about that?
No, I, we, we do allow remote locations.
Okay.
Yeah, there was a, what you read was a letter written by a competitor, suggesting that this was not allowable, but it is, so.
Okay, so we don't, okay.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, roll call please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
ADI?
Ordinance two zero two two dash zero two nine was passed, or waived, second reading, gentlemen, you are all set to go forth and do. All right, moving on to Agenda Item N, Reports and Communications, anyone wanna start? Alderwoman Morris, she beat you to it.
Okay, all right, I had mentioned a few weeks ago that I was going to be doing a ward meeting, unfortunately, that ward meeting was going to coincide with election day tomorrow, so I do not want to do that, so I'm rescheduling that ward meeting for July twelfth, my intent is to have it at Jefferson Elementary School, but I still need to verify that with the principal there, so, that's all I've got.
Okay, Alderman Smith?
Special thanks to the Street Department, Andy, Brian, and Zach on thirteenth and fourteenth, the dry weather has let the construction crews get ahead of schedule, but it's also created a mountain of dust, they sprayed water, the residents are extremely happy that a little rain has helped things out a lot, and that's it.
Alderman McAdams?
Now that Carolyn has announced her ward meeting, I'm happy to announce a fifth ward meeting, somewhere towards the end of July at Cornerstone, I will have a date as soon as we can nail that down.
Alderman Favor?
So tomorrow night is the airport advisory board meeting, it's at the airport in the main hangar, seven P.M., open to the public if you'd like to come and attend.
Awesome, Alderman Verbic?
War More Six, welcome to Drum Corps International Tour of Champions at Husky Stadium on Saturday, July ninth, hosting performers from six states, come on out.
Did I hear them practicing today?
You heard them, yes, and last night, yes.
Did you hear them last night?
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderwoman Larson?
Just a couple of things, I wanna thank, Mayor had already brought up about the annual report, I mean, it, every department, I mean, all these numbers don't just start at the top, everybody adds to it, and just thanks for all your help and the great reports we get, I mean, it's like straight A report card, it's awesome, and then Carolyn brought it up, but I'll bring it up tomorrow, is vote, so if there's anything that you don't like that's going on in the news, get your butt out there and vote, and really look at who you're voting for, and finally, I wanna thank the fire department, bringing out, I think there's Smokehouse, to the farm safety, that was out at John Mac, which is not just for farm kids, but it was a great turnout, and all the kids really got a lot out of it, so thank you.
Myself, I had a downtown merchants meeting, which I, I just gotta give kudos to the downtown merchants, they're going through a lot right now, and they're all incredibly supportive to the project that we've got going on, which is great, have spoke to the Rotary Club, I can't remember which Rotary Club it is, but it was seven A.M., and it was at Caldwell Bankers Realtor Facility by Andre Powell's In-N-Out Cuts, I can't think[1771.16]
Myself, I had a downtown merchants meeting, which I just gotta give kudos to the downtown merchants. They're going through a lot right now, and they're all incredibly supportive to the project that we've got going on, which is great. Has spoke to the Rotary Club, I can't remember which Rotary Club it is, but it was seven AM, and it was at Caldwell Bankers Realtor Facility by Andre Powell's In-N-Out Cuts, I can't think of the address. But it's great talking to them, and that's a role I do enjoy. I mean, it's nice to get out in front of people. You all get ward meetings, I get Rotaries and Kiwanas and all the different service groups. It's great to be able to go out, answer questions, and just share all the, actually, all the amazing things we have going on right now. Also went to the Pride Parade, it was phenomenal. I mean, they're, Alex Neerad, I think, said there was four hundred and fifty people he was anticipating that were there, or that he counted. It was a great event, well turned out, or well, the turnout was really good, and just a lot of great conversations. Ran into a lot of constituents there and had a, just like I said, a lot of great conversations. Attended a university collaborative meeting, so a university village collaborative meeting that FSA drives that, and they've had some changeover in staff, so a lot of introductions, a lot of what's going on, but it's great to see the focus that's being spent on that particular area. And then met with the city manager with a bunch of Greeks, just what's going on in Greek Row, talking about the fall, talking about some of the construction we got going on there. And there's just a lot of excitement from the Greek community with all the changes that have been happening around their area. So busy couple of weeks, but just a fantastic couple of weeks. And with that, City Manager, you got anything?
No report.
All right, awesome. All right, hearing that, moving on to agenda item O, executive session, we have none, which leads us to agenda item P, adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Favor, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign. We are adjourned.